My name is Patrick Hanlon. I'm the vice chair of the zoning board of appeals. And in the absence of the chair, who is out of town and cannot make it tonight, I'm calling this meeting of the board to order. So I'd like to confirm that all members and anticipated officials are present. Some members of the zoning board of appeals, Roger Dupont.
Here.
Venkatesh Holy.
Here.
Adam LeBlanc.
Here.
And I'm here. Brad Baranowski is en route from the airport to his hotel room. And I hope we'll get here in a little bit. But traffic is traffic, so we'll have to play that by ear. Town officials, Colleen Ralston, the zoning assistant clerk. I know Colleen is here because if Colleen weren't here, the rest of you couldn't be here. Appearing for docket 3861, 351 Apple Street, William Corbett. How about Joanne Corbett?
Dan Cameron is here representing Mrs. Corbett. She may be on his.
I was just gonna get to you next, but there's a little window here that indicates that this Corbett is here.
I'm here.
Is there anyone here for docket 3859, 69 Falmouth Road? Okay, that case is going to be continued, so no one has to be here for that. What about docket number 3863, 144 Webster Street?
Here.
Yes, here. Okay. Appearing for docket 3864, 37 Melrose Street? Okay, that one too is, it will be continued tonight, so people don't need for that to be here. The first item. Hold on a second. So tonight's meeting of the Arlington zoning board of appeals is being conducted remotely, consistent with the bill that was signed by Governor Healy on March 28th, 2025, authorizing, which extended temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to June 30th, 2027. The extension of these provisions allows public bodies to hold their meetings remotely by providing live adequate alternative means of public access to the deliberations. This meeting is being recorded, and it will be broadcast by ACMI. Members of the public who are participating via Zoom and who wish to offer public comment should be aware that they will be asked to provide their full name and address so that a complete public record of the meeting can be taken in accordance with state law. All participants of this meeting are advised that people may be listening to the meeting without offering public comment, and those people are not required to identify themselves. Any votes that are taken this evening will be conducted by roll call. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. As chair, I reserve the right to take items out of order in the interest of promoting an orderly meeting. As the board will be taking up new business at this meeting, as chair, I make the following land acknowledgement. Whereas the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington, Massachusetts, discusses and arbitrates the use of land in Arlington, formerly known as monotomy, an Algonkin word meaning swift waters. The board hereby acknowledges that the town of Arlington is located on the ancestral lands of the Massachusetts tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, province, and Commonwealth have taken their names. We pay our respects to the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historic Massachusetts territories today. We'll start tonight's meeting with administrative items. We have two member votes on minutes. And these items relate to the operation of the board and as such will be conducted without input from the general public. The board will not take up any new business or prior hearings during this part of the session or will there be introduction of any new information on matters that were previously brought before the board? So the first item up is the member vote on the minutes from July 8th, 2025. Those have been prepared by our able zoning assistant, Colleen Ralston. And a copy has been distributed to all of us for us to review and approve. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from July 8th, 2025, meeting of the board.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Dupont. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Holy. All in favor of the motion, we're going to do a roll of call vote. So the first member is Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Holy?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
And the acting chair also votes yes, so those are approved. Second item are minutes from the July 22nd, 2025 meeting. These two were prepared by our able assistant, Colleen Ralston. They were distributed for comment to all the members of the board. And whatever comments that Ms. Ralston received have been incorporated into the minutes by now. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the July 22nd, 2025 meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. So it's moved by Mr. Dupont. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. LeBlanc. We'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Dupont.
Yes.
Mr. Holy?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so those meetings too are approved. And we'll now move to the public hearing part of the meeting. And here's some ground rules for effective participation. So before opening tonight's meeting for the public hearings, here are the ground rules for clear and effective contact of tonight's business. After I announce each agenda item, I will ask the applicant to introduce themselves to make their presentation to the board. I will then request that the members of the board ask what questions they have on the proposal. After the board's questions have been answered, I will open the meeting for public comment. At the conclusion of public comment, the board will deliberate and vote to either continue or close the public hearing. All votes will be conducted by roll call vote. The final vote on any matter before the board will be taken at a subsequent meeting whence the written decision in the case at issue has been drafted and provided to the board. The decision will then be filed with the town clerk, starting the 20-day appeal period under state law. After that time, the applicant may proceed with the building permit. However, under state law, no decision granted by this board shall take effect until a certified copy of the final decision has been filed with and recorded at the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds in Cambridge by the applicant. So I'll now open the meeting for the public meeting. And I'll take some of these items out of order, particularly since we're hoping that Mr. Baranowski will be here before we're finished. We have two items that need to be continued. One of them, we've received a request from the applicant. That's the, excuse me, that's the meeting for, let me just remember what the address is. 69 Falmouth Road. We've received a request for a continuance for the convenience of the applicant to our next meeting, which is August 26th, 2025. And so I will move that the board continue the application, in this case, 3859, 69 Falmouth Road, to 7:30 on Tuesday, August 26th, 2025, at 7:30 PM. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Dupont. We'll vote by roll call, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Holy?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, and so the motion passes. The second continuance is in 37 Melrose Street. That's a somewhat different situation. They've been attempting to provide some additional information that was requested by the board a week and a half ago. And my understanding is the contractor has been out of town and difficult to reach. And so they've been unable to provide the required information in time to have the hearing on our docket. They would like to be continued to the 26th in the same way the Falmouth case was. And so I'm going to call that hearing to order and then move to continue the hearing to a date certain of Tuesday, August 26th, 2025, at 7:30 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dupont. We'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Holy?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so that matter is also continued. At this point, we have two items on the docket, which we can proceed to a regular public hearing. One of them is a continuance from our previous meeting. And that is the, excuse me, that's docket 3861, 351 Appleton Street. And that one is on our agenda first. But we're in a position, until Mr. Baranowski arrives, we don't have enough people who were there at the first part of the hearing to dispose of the case at this part. So we're going to put that one off in the hope that Mr. Baranowski will arrive at his hotel room and be able to log in. And with that, the first case up on our agenda then is, excuse me, the first up on our agenda is 3863, 144 Webster Street. And I'd like to invite the representative of the applicant to introduce himself and explain what they'd like to do. And I think that's what, Mr. Stone?
Sorry, it's Josh McAlack here. Mr. Stone is also with me. I was the one who applied for the special permit. I'm the contractor for the future job here coming up. Just want to say thanks, everybody, for being on the meeting. And we've done a lot of projects in Arlington and haven't got a chance to meet you in the zoning board yet, but just wanted to introduce myself here first.
You're welcome.
So we purchased the project here on 144 Webster. It has a pre-existing, non-conforming structure, being the front porches, to be a little technical, that are in the setback. We want to enclose those porches and make it part of living space for a front unit. We want to turn the structure into a front unit, a back unit, be a two-family.
Mr. McAlack, maybe you could bring up the pictures and show us what it is you're proposing?
Sure, give me one second here.
Yes, there we go.
So I have not had a ton of experience here on Zoom. I know that sounds strange with the past four or five years of being a contractor. So bear with me here.
That's fine. Take all the time you want. We're still waiting for Mr. Baranowski.
Josh, are you able to bring it up? This is David. I'm one of the owners of Northeast Venture Group. We own the property and we partner with Josh on these projects. So wanted to just say hello as well. We've worked in town for many years with you folks and also haven't had the pleasure of being here and meeting you all.
Thank you.
Dave, I don't have a lot of permissions available for sharing, so.
You're kind of catching us all on the dog days of summer. We're all remote, trying to make it happen. Josh is getting the, the one week a year, he takes off with his family. But let me try to share what I have. Let me see if this.
Okay.
Can you see?
Yeah, see your photograph.
Okay, great. It's yelling at me here a little bit, but let me, okay. So Josh, I'll share. If you can see my screen, and I'll let you, and this is kind of the existing and then the proposed. So I'll let you just, you know, I'll let you say what you need to say, and I'll share the screens.
So as you guys can see, there's a two-story front porch here on the property. A lot of really, really overgrown. Structurally, it definitely needs some work, just in general. So we're kind of, we're hoping to go down and enclose the front porch and kind of add it to the living space for this front unit. So you'd actually go up the stairs and your front door would be on the right, entering into kind of the living room area. And the second floor, we'd have, end up being some closets for some bedrooms, kind of maintaining the existing footprint, not going any further out than the existing. But we would want to kind of square off to the side of the house on the right, if you're looking at it. And rebuild it, new footings, new structure, insulation, plumbing, all that kind of stuff.
Okay, and so that is still bumped out in the front as a porch is with the same dimension? And it's not extending over to the building side on the left, is that correct?
Not extending to the left, no.
No. And you've got sort of a window fenestration that's working with the porch itself and giving some identity to it? And could you describe what you're doing with the materials and the siding? It looks as if you've patterned that in a way that reflects some thought.
Yeah, on the plans here, we have a board and battening siding, kind of the lower portions of the first and second floor, kind of mimicking a balustrade with a PVC detail centering it in the center of the windows, kind of detailing that rail. And then we have a normal lap siding, something we typically do. We do kind of play with exposures, so the exposure on the lap siding is a little larger than the rest of the house. It's just something we like to do. And then down below, the plantings and things like that, we do have some lattice work and some work going on down there. I can't say if we'll use a lattice, like a sheet lattice, but we do like to enclose the structure and make that look as visually appealing as possible.
And so if I understand what you've said earlier, the living space of the house is just going to be extended into this expanded area, correct?
Correct.
So it will be a living room meeting space on the first floor and a walk-in closet and I think a bathroom on the second floor?
Correct.
Correct, yeah. The, I wonder if you could, on the application, there are two different figures in the beginning and then in the calculation at the end on GFA. And I wonder if you could explain what the GFA actually is? And there's an interesting thing about it. It looks as if the GFA on the attic has been reduced by about 100 feet from where it is today. And it would be interesting if you could explain that.
The GFA in the attic?
I think it comes down from 400 something to 300 something in the calculations.
She wants a second. So I have a 626 square foot?
So, Mr. Stone, if you could put up the plot plan?
Sure.
That'll make it at least here.
I'm gonna stop sharing for a moment and just fumble around and try to find that, sure. You don't want existing, you want proposed, right?
Yeah. I think, I don't, I think existing and proposed are both different. In the special permit application, in the actual calculations by floor, you have one number that's on the plot plan, and that's also the number that appears later on, and that's part of the application. But it's different from the numbers that appear at the beginning of the, at the beginning of the application. I just want to be clear on what the actual numbers are.
So this is, this is the proposed development conditions. So we have existing and post-development.
Okay, so if you look over here, I'd like to point it. On the far right-hand side, you've got the calculation by floor of the proposed and the required, as I think if you make that bigger, that's what it is. And what I'm asking you about is really the proposed. You can see that, yeah, the existing, the existing ad for the attic is 428, and the proposed is 313.
It must just be one unit I accidentally put on here, because I have 626.
Ah. Okay. And that would only affect that one. So what is the, so that 4116 is not, I didn't add that up, is that correct? The total?
Just quick, man.
Give Josh a second to take a look.
That's fine.
And again, this might be the attic height over seven feet. So we would probably need to take a look at it, but.
Right, I'm assuming that that's the case. I mean, it says that that's the case on the chart, so I'm.
Right, right.
That's all that would count towards GFA anyway.
Right. I know this was something that we looked at closely, trying to be as close as possible to the existing. So.
Thank you.
I mean, so our proposed, it looks like there's a slight miscalculation. It shows 4,166.
So is that just a typo there?
I think it might be just a typo here and there.
Okay. So do we have the attic over seven feet for the third floor that we can share?
So I have, yeah, I got a calculation here. It's 626 feet, which is 0.434, which is less than the 50% allowable percentage.
So it looks like he used, it looks like our civil engineer took one, if I can expand this out, it sounds like he may have only taken one side for just the attic. Is that correct, in kind of what you're seeing, Josh?
It seems like, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So it'd be roughly 300 more. I guess the question I have then is what number was used to calculate the proposed open space? Because on this chart at least, you have 30%, the required at 1235, and you're only a little bit over that. And I'm wondering whether if the, what affect the, I mean, I don't know which number for gross floor area was used in that calculation.
I'm okay.
Is the, is the open space, will that change?
The ratio would change, well, I don't know.
Because to me, I don't think that the, I could be wrong here, but I don't know if the GFA number is going to change the open space percentage at all.
It should, because the GFA is the denominator to that percentage.
Okay. So this is something that we, we would have to get, you know, we would have to confirm, and we could sit here and try to crunch it. I know, waiting for someone.
Well, I'm not, I'm not hoping not to stall until he gets here.
I completely understand. Nobody wants to stall while we try to run that down.
But when I do, when I do the calculation on the 4116 figure, I come up with, at 30% of that is 1234, which is actually one square foot short of the required. And if it's gotten to be bigger, you may have some problem with compliance with the usable open space requirement.
This is probably something that we would, you know, need to double check. I wish my civil engineer was here. He'd probably be able to, you know, quickly help us with this.
Yeah.
I wish I invited him to join the call. And it was on my mind, and of course, decided not to. But help me kind of play it through. So is under the assumption that we have kind of a clerical or administrative just miss on the plan here? And that that number is 626, and the total GFA has gone up? We would need to calculate the usable open space. And if that is adjusted, it looks like, so it looks like we're under it here.
Right, well, no, here, what you have as proposed is 1243.
Is over it by just a little bit, right.
That's over it, and that's good, right? Because it's the minimum. So, but if the GFA is more, 30% of it is also more. And so the required will begin going up. And it doesn't have much room to go before it's over what the proposed is. But the proposed itself is going up. So the number, I'm not quite sure how the number would actually work out.
Yep, so there's a few kind of moving parts and relationships here. And, you know, sorry to take the board's time on something that, you know, should have been probably buttoned up on our side. If I could, if I could kind of, obviously, we will get this sorted out and chat with our team. Josh, I don't know if you're able to take a quick note and just say, you know, we have to chat with Fred. So we work with Fred Russell on, I'm sure you guys have crossed paths with Fred in the past. He's been doing these things for 20 or 30 years, or possibly longer, as well as Jim Keenan. So someone just must have got their lines crossed at some point. We'll take a look and update that. If I could also kind of just ask, in general, you know, the board's kind of feedback on the proposal and kind of what we're looking to do.
We don't have to stop here. We can, I've actually gotten to the point where I've asked the questions that I was proposing to ask. And the next step is to ask the members of the board if they have other things. And presumably, they can get on to what other their concerns are, what they'd like to know. So let's fill out this record, and if we need to do more to make sure we have the usable open space nailed down, then we'll get that done. But let's go on and have the hearing. So I'm not quite sure. It may be that the other members of the board will want to look at this chart. But if not, I just want to open up to any comments or questions by other members of the board. And let me also say that Mr. Baranowski is now here. And welcome. I'm sorry for all the trouble you had getting here, but you're very welcome to be here.
I apologize to the board and to the public for being tardy.
Okay, so are there any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. LeBlanc?
This question is probably more for the board, but the proposal here is coming under and closing a porch. But what's really happening is a porch is being demolished and rebuilt. And how do we feel about what the intent of the zoning bylaw is? That this is being filed on there for a special permit versus what's actually being requested? Because I sort of feel that what we have is against what the intent of that zoning bylaw is, since it's demolishing an existing porch and then building a new enclosed structure rather than taking an existing open porch and then closing it?
Would it?
So would it like to hear maybe what other others think of that?
Our our goal behind demolishing it, sorry. Uh, is is just to ensure that the structure was a hundred percent structurally sound versus what's what's existing there now.
Mr. LeBlanc, would it matter to you in the way you're thinking about this, if after this was all constructed, you were had the more typical situation that there was an identifiable porch there as the sort of separate rooms that's often may or may not be heated in it and, you know, looking out rather than simply having the house move out somewhat to occupy what is essentially a new bump out in the building?
Yeah, I think part of it for me is it just feels like we're not living up to the spirit of what the intention of that zoning bylaw is and that we're just I would probably feel more comfortable if it was being built in the same footprint. Now, I understand that probably has implications on the interior in terms of what you're trying to accomplish. But I just, I I want to keep in mind what this, the spirit of of this.
Mr. McCullough, Mr. McCullough, is the footprint different?
So we would be extending it if you're looking straight at the house over to the right, kind of squaring off with the existing main portion of the house. Just to kind of encapsulate that square footage.
Okay, and would it extend, would it extend out any further into the towards the street?
No, it wouldn't extend. The overhangs on the roof wouldn't extend and the side overhangs would not extend either.
Okay. I think that that is a question for the board in terms when we'll, that we'll probably get to when we get to the point of debating this, but are there, Mr. Mr. LeBlanc, did you have something else you wanted to raise?
No, that was, that was my main comment and or question on on this application.
Are there any other comments or questions for the board?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick clarify.
Mr. Dupont.
So I just wanted to make sure so that in the proposed GFA, the increase on the first and second floor is because of the increase in the in the, in the first and second enclosures?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. So anything else? Okay. Um, so this is a public hearing. I don't know, open the meeting. Well, it's and also is a public hearing that has a public comment part to it, which I'll now open the meeting to. Public questions and comments will only be taken as they relate to the matter at hand and should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing its decision on this project. Members of the public will be granted time to ask questions and make comments. Members of the public who wish to speak should digitally raise their hand using the button on the react tab in the Zoom application. Those calling in by phone, please dial star nine to indicate that you would like to speak. You will be called upon by the chair and asked to give your full name and address to the record. And you will be given time for your questions and comments. All questions are to be addressed through the chair. Won't have individual conversations with the applicant or anyone else. Um, and you should please remember to speak clearly. And I just gave you an example of not speaking clearly. Don't do what I did. And once all public questions and comments have been addressed, where twenty minutes have elapsed, the public comment period will be closed. Uh, so with that, is there anyone here who would like to, if a member of the public who would like to address this application? Mr. Moore. Good to see you.
Mr. Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. In looking at the the photograph there and comparing that to what's available on Google Maps, it's, it it seems to feel very different. The perspective is strange on the photograph provided by the applicant. The front yard is actually quite small. It looks extensive in the photograph, but it's not. I don't know, it must have been the aspect of the lens or something in the in the picture. So they're moving, it looks to me like the porch will be filling the space more, certainly of the and what, I guess I would ask just briefly, what is the board's position on enclosing existing porches? In terms of just, and this gets a a little bit of what Mr. LeBlanc was was just raising in terms of the spirit of the zoning law on porches to to, what is the board's position on doing that to increase the living space of a house?
Well, I know there's a limit, I think, how much this is the right time to get into that, but we've had, I I can tell you, this is an issue that has come up with us before. And the difficulty, until very recently, this, the provision of the bylaw that the applicant is relying on is fairly recent. It, and before that, there was nothing that provided for special exceptions for enclosing a porch. The there's no particular history on the details of that at town meeting. It wasn't really discussed. The the board, as in the past, felt some discomfort at the notion that this could be used, particularly used deliberately and strategically by somebody who builds a porch first and then encloses it later to essentially subvert the setback requirements. And that is a danger that we have discussed on several occasions. That has at least two aspects to it. One is the, is whether it still looks like a porch. It's entirely the external aspect. Uh, and actually, the reason why I spent a little time with Mr. McCullough or Mr. Zone on that subject was that here the distinguishing the external, external porch uh, in a way that that gives it integrity as an external structure is something that we have on several occasions required. And the applicant has done more than many in in an attempt to make, to to satisfy our objections there. We have done that under, we have insisted on that under circumstances where the applicant there's one case where we've done it where the applicant was actually not maintaining a porch as a separate room, the way they often are done, but moving the living space out. So we are not entirely without sin, if that is a sin, in what we've allowed in in the past. But we've been struggling with this issue for for this reason. And I think we have not previously thought in the way that that Mr. LeBlanc was doing it about, you know, whether or not you demolish the porch or not, that often is a structural thing. And we have not so far had occasion to consider whether that in and of itself is a reason for concern. But the notion that that you're essentially just moving into the setback. Uh, and sure, we call it a porch and the zoning bylaw calls it a porch, but this is a section of the bylaw that's called projections into minimum yards. And it has in general, something to do with the idea that, like with a regular porch that isn't enclosed, it's something that's attached to the house, but somehow distinguished from it. And so these are all a bunch of issues that have occupied over the last year, the board in several cases to figure it all out. And we haven't figured it all out. And we will probably be struggling with that question again in this case, in the same way we have on on several others in in a way of of, you know, of doing something that makes sense. But in some respects, this application is more attractive, but it does than some that we've received. But it does put in in, it does put front and center the underlying idea that that this may not be something that is functioning as a porch. There also are potential legal issues that would have to do with our insisting to do more in term, being concerned about the internal organization. And before moving in that direction, I think that we would have to consult with town council.
Right.
So that's where we are.
Mr. Moore. Thank you very much. That's, that context, I think, is important to have read into the record and have the applicant understand the manifold issues around around this sort of thing. So thank you. Thank you for that. Uh, the one other, one other question I had was, it looks to me like right now there's a a gable roof on on, if you look at the front of the house on the third floor of the left side, there's nothing on the right. And there's going to be an added gable on the right. Of course, it's a little hard to know the the picture that I was looking at on street, on on street view may have been an old one. And maybe there are currently two gables on the third floor right now that basically mirror each other. Or that's going to be added as part of the project. Does that mean the chimney is coming down? I guess I would ask that question.
Mr. Zone, Mr. McCullough.
Yes, so the the plan would be to add a dormer on the right side of the house that mirrors the left side. It makes room for a bathroom and a staircase up to the third floor. I'm sure a bunch of you have been inside some of these old two families where the staircase doesn't have adequate headroom. So that's kind of, you know, the the goal behind the left dormer is the switchback staircase and then the the other dormer is for a bathroom. We do plan on taking the distinct chimney down because of the new mixed fuels. You know, plans mass save and all that, you know, all that kind of stuff being in all electric home. Doesn't really make sense to have a fireplace in there. Even even if we wanted to have a wood burning fireplace there, we would have to follow the the mixed fuel guidelines. That that they said in place.
So just, just to make one thing clear, it is true, I'm not, I'm reading the the plans correctly. They, in thinking that they, that what's, what's going on here is we have a two family house, the sort of old style up and down. One unit on top, one unit on the bottom, and that's being really turned into a front and back duplex with essentially mirror image houses on the front and back. Is that basically right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right, Mr. Moore, is there anything else?
Uh, I, I don't think so unless there's implications for the third floor now being an added story, but you know better than I whether or not that's an issue here.
We'll have to see where that is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. The next person on our, whose range sand is Maura Power.
Hello. I live at one forty Webster, right next door. And my question is, what are the plans for the driveway, the existing garage and the backyard? You're saying it's two families, so obviously we're thinking more than one car in space. So just wondering what the thought is there?
Mr. McCullough?
Uh, yeah, so currently the plan for the, the garage is to leave it to offer each unit to have its own individual parking spot. I'm sure more here, you're you're familiar with the driveway just being, you know, two kind of concrete strips. We are proposing an eight foot wide driveway. With, I think that leaves us a little over two feet to the property line just to have in and out cars and, you know, with the two cars in the garage and, you know, two car tandem parking in the driveway. It should be more than adequate to accommodate, you know, a two car per unit family.
Okay, so you're not planning on going into the the backyard for parking at all?
No, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Believe, believe it or not, this is this, this yard is actually one of the larger ones we've been working with recently, and we want to keep it just as much as anybody in the neighborhood and you know, anybody on the board probably wants, so.
Okay, great.
Mr. McCullough, ordinarily on our parking, on our, our parking bylaw, it would require a a two foot vegetative buffer between this and the property line on the other side. And I was wondering, you've got, you've indicated you've reserved just about the right space to do that. So I'm wondering if that's what your plan is.
Yes, that that would be the plan. Also, the the neighbors to the left, that their their lawn is slightly higher than our driveway grade would be. So without, you know, having to do retaining walls and some decent excavation on it, we don't really have the space to to put it right on the line, nor would we want to.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address this application? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment session and turn to a discussion of the application. The, I think we've already in some ways set that up. This is an application for enclosing a, enclosing a porch, uh, two porches actually on each, on each level. And it is being done in the way that you've seen in the plans. The intention is to use the the additional space to integrate into the into the house, into the living space of the house itself. And so the, this area would lose what one might consider the separate identity of a porch. But at the same time, it at least in a functional way, but in the same way that it it is, does retain a definite external identity as a projection from the house and and is not exactly the equivalent of just moving the house into the setback. We have dealt with that kind of a case and struggled with that kind of a case in the past. And that probably is the biggest issue that we have before is in this case. There are no, as you know, there are no special rules on enclosing porches, section five, three, nine, D, just says it can be done by special permit. So we are in a position where we have to apply only the requirements of section three point, three point, three from the bylaw. It seemed, without going into detail into all of them, it seems that the main question here is going to be the biggest question under three point, three point, three, which is whether the adverse effects outweigh the beneficial aspects. Certainly having, setting to one side, the question of whether it defeats the purpose of the bylaw, having some additional spaces, obviously, an amenity to the people who will ultimately buy these units. And I'm sure that regardless of what we do with the people who want to buy the one in the back, which doesn't pose the issue, but is essentially the mirror image of this, we'll be glad to have it. We generally have thought that things that make houses more suitable to individuals also is serving a public interest in maintaining property values and the tax base in Arlington. And there's a public interest to that as well. The adverse effect is one that we have to figure out whether it is an adverse effect, and that is whether or not, and if so, to what extent there is some derogation from the purpose of the bylaw or from the purpose of the setback requirements that would that would be implicated by our approving this application. Beyond this, there are some that, there are no real issues, I think, in terms of transportation. The, there's no issues really in terms of increasing demand on on public services. This is clearly allowed under the bylaw if we find that that it's allowed under the general provisions relating to special exceptions. So there's no issue there relating to the there's no issue there relating to public services or the authorization rather of of the of a special permit if we find that the requirements are met. And the question about having too much of a use that will have a detrimental impact is also something that's not applicable here. This is an R two district. That's, the purpose of an R two district is to accommodate two family houses and there's no issue with respect to that. I skipped over the neighborhood character because in some ways that aspect of the of the bylaw also relates to what I've just stated in terms of the overall conclusion about whether the adverse impacts outweigh the whether the adverse impacts outweigh the the benefits. And that's a question which I I invite you all to raise whatever questions and make whatever comments you have. But that's one that is in particular at the center of this case. I would remind us that we have done these things before. In the past, we've looked to avoid having something becoming a farmer's porch, but moving it in so that it accentuated the distinction between the enclosed porch and and the general house. And we have under circumstances where people redid the fenestration and so forth to achieve that objective preceded, even though we were aware that, as is true in this case, there would be extending the living area. extending the living area into the area that would be occupied by the porch. So we have precedents going that way, and we have a lot of anguish discussion uh, about that. Uh, and I've been more anguished than most than on that. Um, and so I now open it up. Anybody who's got something they want to say, this is the time.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. LeBlanc.
I would feel more comfortable with this as sort of the from the neighborhood character piece if we if the what we're enclosing at least kept the same footprint as the existing porch. So that it would be indented on the when we're looking at it, the plan right side of the property, because then at least um, sort of as you were alluding to before, some of the things we've had people do is that it would do have them change that so that the massing of what would be the enclosed porch does read differently from the rest of the building. You know, enclosing of porches is not something that is not in this neighborhood. There are plenty of examples of enclosed porches throughout the neighborhood. So I don't think it poses a a problem that way. I would just say that um in keeping of what I think the intent is that um that the it should be what the existing footprint of that porch is that would be the new enclosed space.
Well, thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Is there anyone else who wants to comment on this?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dupont.
So building on what Mr. LeBlanc has just said, so when I look at this, and if you read the language of five point three point nine D where it says porches, decks, et cetera, um may be enclosed, extended or built upon with a special permit, I I think it does refer to existing porches. And we know that if you had a lot that was empty and you tried to put a porch into the setback, you would not be allowed. So I think I balance things or weigh things sort of against those considerations. And I also agree, and I would feel more comfortable if what we were talking about is uh, is it is just enclosing what is already there, even though I think by removing the porch entirely, that may also have an effect on the character of what it is you're trying to do. Because you may lose the protection. I'm not arguing that we should uh, not view this as protected, but I think you could argue that once you take down a porch entirely, that you don't essentially have the grandfathering that it was entitled to if all you were doing was enclosing what's going to stay there. So in the balance, the way I look at it is that we're really talking about existing porches. And if it has to be rebuilt for structural reasons, that's something to consider. But I also think as Mr. LeBlanc pointed out, that if it was within the existing footprint, it would adhere more closely to what I view as the intent of the bylaw as well.
Mr. Sony, what would you, how would you react to the thought that rather than extending the port, the existing porch all the way out to the right, that you maintain the footprint basically that it already has, but otherwise you could do the same sorts of things that you wanted to do?
Yeah, I just want to say I appreciate, you know, everyone's comments and and thoughts. Um. Uh, obviously, you know, we we designed it this way um, because we thought it was a little bit more efficient for rebuilding the porch and kind of squaring it off to the house and opening it to the house where the lines um, the lines within the house would just be truthfully, you know, and and selfishly better better living space and and a better product for, you know, whoever's going to buy it. Um, I certainly understand the perspective that, you know, is being brought up where kind of the maybe in the the purest kind of form of what's written in the the bylaws that, you know, you want to rebuild what's existing or enclose what's existing, so as we looked at it, um, and in the past, when we've done other projects in town, we've done several. Um, we have actually rebuilt porches in place because structurally they they may have been better. Um, or or they could have been rebuilt and enclosed in place. Um, and and you know, that's that's something that I rely on Joshua. He's got, you know, uh, a lot, a lot of experience. I won't date him on the call here, but he's got a lot of experience doing this. Um. So when he kind of looks at me and says, uh, this one can't stay, Dave, we ha, we gotta, we gotta take it down. Um, I think that was a big consideration for us when we looked at what's what's the best product? And, you know, is that something that the board would be flexible with us on? So um, would love if that could be considered here, completely understand the uh, the the opposing view. Um, uh, I I think I think if you said, hey, you can't have it or you can have it smaller. It's 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 understood that that's what we would do. Um, would love if you would consider the original plan. Um, but I, you know, that that's a little bit the the kind of backstory to why we why we designed it this way. As we looked at the floor plans with it enclosed, it was just very much, I think it's another foot or two, you know, and and we obviously we could give you the exact, but I I think it is maybe two feet to the to the to line it up and and that's why we we went for it, because we thought it was just a lot, a lot more efficient and and just a better product at the end.
Okay, so I've got a question from Mr. LeBlanc, uh, and I guess Mr. Dupont. Assuming that it's correct, and I do assume this for this purpose, that that literally keeping the existing porches uh, would be inappropriate for building reasons, uh, for structural reasons, but the applicant could rebuild it and maybe do some more, I mean, obviously, the the uh, the cladding would have to be all new, uh, could rebuild it, but rebuild it on the same footprint. Would that adequately address your concerns?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. LeBlanc.
Uh, I would say yes. Um, I would be comfortable with that. If I, for me, it's the more concerned about the what the existing footprint of the porch is. Um, if the existing structure of the porch is not adequate to support what's going on and that it needs to be rebuilt to um, provide, you know, a safe space, or then that that's that's a different story, but I'm still opposed to it being expanded from what it what it is. I would want it to be the same footprint.
Mr. Dupont, I wonder if you agree with that?
Yeah, I echo those sentiments completely.
Okay, um, is there anything, any other discussion? Mr. Mr. Holy, you want to weigh in on this or? You're the only one who hasn't spoken except for me, and I've spoken altogether too much.
Um, I I um, I'm kind of um, um, in favor of what Adam and Roger Dupont is outlining there. Um, to keep the building, you know, the porch footprint within what is existing. Um. Um, the only reason as as, you know, is just to um, not have a precedence in a way. Um, wherein this can be done more more frequently, right? Um, that's just how I feel about it. And just strictly with adhering to the bylaws there, yeah.
Okay. All right, is there any anything further from any of us? Mr. Sony, you looked as if you had, so I'm sorry, Mr. Berenowski.
May I ask just a clarifying question about this?
Yes, you certainly may.
Um, what work, I guess, in the board's um, thinking here is the word extended doing? Um, because I understand that the concern here is about the footprint staying the same, but the I, you know, I understand I didn't get it on the beginning of this call, so, um, but it seems like the the bylaw still is contemplating some extension of the original footprint, so long as there is a obviously a special permit, and that extension could in theory be enclosed. Um, I just was curious how those how that part of the, how that part of the bylaw is working here.
Mr. Dupont, do you have a view on that?
Um, so I think, um, I'm trying to get back to, so for me, it's a matter of degree. So when I look at the language there, and I'm going to pull it up for myself. Um, I I understand that it says extended, and I think it's sort of you you might get the benefit of a couple of the um a couple of those conditions that are cited in section D. But I I'm concerned, I think that what happens is you start like melding all of them together and you get to extend something that is uh, not just a small porch, but it now is increasing um, something for the use. It's really an expansion of the living space. And so I I know that it's been alluded to before, but I I just think that there is a limit, and I realize that we all may have our own view as to what the limit is or limits are, but for me, in this particular case, the idea of using the extension portion of this in some ways runs counter to how I view the um the application of this provision in in this specific instance. So it's not very scientific, but it's just the way it looks to me.
Mr. Chair, could I just respond real quick to this?
Yes, Mr. Berenowski.
The I think there is a probably textual hook for your position, Mr. Dupont. There is an or here. And we're kind of treating the or as disjunctive, right? It doesn't say that you can um, enclose, extend and build upon.
Right.
With a special permit, it says you can enclose, extend or build upon. And so you're kind of implicitly treating the or as disjunctive, which I'm I'm just for the record to say, and this is I I think there is a textual hook for what you're saying, but um, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, um, so I think if there's, is there anything else from any member of the board? So let's, I think at this point, I let me turn to Mr. So and Mr. McCauley. You've sort of heard that there's discomfort on the board uh, with what we have for us. I I I think it's fair to say that what you've proposed is fairly attractive, uh, but I also share the misgivings uh, of the way and and to me, the fault is in town meeting for not having figured all this out. But it often happens that you pass a law and then you figure out what's wrong with it and uh, and that may be happening here, uh, but we can't fix that it uh, this summer, and so I'm wondering whether the right procedure at this point wouldn't be to continue this hearing until the twenty sixth, which is our next date. If you think that's appropriate, or we could get the next date after that, I believe is the ninth. Is that correct, Ms. Boulston?
Could I just?
But just to finish on that, we also have got some details about numbers that we wanted to figure out, so we probably want to 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 do that as well.
So I wanted to um, I wanted to ask maybe a clarifying question of the board, uh, based on kind of the feedback. Um, uh, I hear kind of the feedback about kind of rebuilding, you know, uh, the the existing kind of footprint. Um, and closing the existing footprint. Sorry if the I'm not articulating that correctly, but I think I think I understand what you're asking, which is basically don't, would prefer not to see it extended to to the edge of the house and widen the the footprint. Um, it, the clarifying question for me is um i- is it, is it kind of the board's view to to keep the foot, the the same um, dimensions in the same spot or keep the dimensions in general, if if it made most sense for us to then kind of still line it up on the on the side and I and I'm just asking to clarify since it sounds like we may have to go back and and kind of rethink the plan anyway. I just want to get the board's feedback before we spend time and energy on something like that. Did I, am I making sense in kind of what I'm asking?
My understanding is is what you're saying is you want, you you're thinking about making the space just as big as it was before, but configured in a different shape.
Well, well, same shape, but just slid to the right to line up with the right edge of the house.
Oh, I see. So you're, so it's compensated for by increasing the space on the left.
Think what I'm hearing essentially is would like to see that the same uh, dimensional porch be enclosed if we have to tear it down, not enlarged and and enclosed. And I just want to kind of get that feedback before we go back to the drawing board. And if the answer is would prefer to see the same space in the same spot, totally fine. I just kind of want to clarify the board's feedback.
Which your options are, so does anyone want to answer that? Or, I mean, obviously, we're, we can't speak as a board, we're just members saying though, but uh, Mr. LeBlanc and Mr. Dupont have been vocal, and I wonder if if you have a view on that on this that suggestion?
I would prefer that it's the same spot so that the um sort of the what we would say the mass of what the porch is stays in the same spot and that it reads as a different mass than what the rest of the building, because that's sort of how it represents itself now.
Yep.
As an existing thing, and that is sort of also falling back on other precedent or other enclosed porches that I can recall that we've done where we have wanted to make sure that that edge of what the enclosed porch is is in board of what the overall width of the house is.
Okay, thank you.
The Mr. I know that Mr. Dupont is shaking his head yes, so.
Yeah, I I I'm on board with that.
Yeah, I I think that was the expected response. I just wanted to clarify uh, in the event that there there were other options. I I think just just to comment back, I I think we would be um, we would be totally fine with this. Uh, I think we knew based on the fact that we needed to kind of come for the special permit request, we we wanted to kind of have this discussion because we thought it was a better product, but the feedback is is not um, uh, is not maybe surprising in some respects, right? So thank you for for that.
Well, thank you. So how, what do we, do you think, the thing, we think, the more thinking that you want to do, is that, is that a?
I think we'd like to come back as soon as possible.
All right, so the twenty six would be the good?
Yeah, under under the um, under the um, maybe uh, the too soon presumption that that there's some positive feedback here and with the right, you know, changes and data figures that, you know, that things would would be able to be approved, and I I know that that's that's not been voted on or anything yet, but um, that's that's fine with us if we need to come back in two weeks and kind of continue.
All right, thank you. Um, all right, so if there's, if there's no more discussion, I'd like to to entertain a motion to uh, continue this case to a date certain of August twenty, Tuesday, August twenty sixth at seven thirty.
Mr. Chairman, so moved?
Um, moved by Mr. Dupont. Is there a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Mr. LeBlanc. I would do a roll call, Mr. Dupont.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Holy.
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Berenowski.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so uh, we're now uh, continued on this case until for another couple of weeks. So look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. All right, we've reached the point where we can come to our our last case of the evening. Um, and this one is, uh, I think it's three fifteen. Let me grab the list of cases here. It's the Appleton case uh, that we began last time. Um, it's at uh um, oops. Fumbling for the docket number. Thirty eight sixty one, three fifty one, Appleton Street. Um, this is a proposal, as you'll remember, for a second driveway uh, to relieve the, the the purpose of which was to relieve the uh, the uh uh, distress of the resident in the house, because there's a problem with parking for people who are coming to uh uh, coming to to offer offered care and services. Um, and we had gotten through a hearing, and I believe Mr. Moore uh, raised raised this for the first time uh, of the question of uh, of safety here, and meanwhile, there have been a couple of other questions that had come up regarding a buffer and so forth. Um, so there's been some developments there, and I wonder if Mr. Cameron, who represents the applicant uh, would like to update the board on what's happened since the twenty second when we last had this case.
Uh, sure. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, this is Dan Cameron, um, from DNA Survey Associates and assisting Mrs. Corbett on this on this petition, and um, there were several things that um, the board wanted some input on. Uh, two of them were from the town officials themselves. Um. Uh, the transportation person who I think uh, this correspondence that's up on the portal from a Mr. Alyssy. Um, and then also um, to confirm with uh, engineering and DPW, who we had already discussed this with, and Mr. Corbett confirmed that discussion as well. And I think the the, I'm not sure if the board has had a chance to read that that conversation. And I think the, the, I'm not sure if the board has had a chance to read that, that correspondence from both. But, um, the, the bottom line is they, um, don't see an issue with this and they, they, you know, based on what was proposed meets their requirements. Um. There were two other things, uh, that the board had asked, uh, the petitioner to follow up on and one was. Could we increase the vegetated area, uh, along the driveway between. Um, Mrs. Corbett's property and, uh, the property of 181 Wallaston Ave. And we did, we increased that to two feet. And the second, um, request was to meet with, uh, the owners of 181. And we did meet, um, with them, uh, but, um, this hammer and, and this, this Torres. Um, out on the site and. We, based on the, the math, the, uh, this driveway will be approximately seven feet, two inches away from their driveway. So there'll be some nice green swathes between Mrs. Corbett's property and their property and. Mrs. Corbett has agreed to work, uh, with, um, uh, those property owners. Uh, to plant, um, uh, adequate vegetation that would provide good screening. Uh, for this new driveway. So, um, I, I feel, we, we feel as all, all of the, uh, requests have been. Um, filled and met, uh, by the board and would certainly entertain any, any questions or comments as well.
So, Mr. Cameron, I, I think it's true that, that there's another. Site plan basically, uh, for this that was filed in the last couple of days showing the green, but the buffer strip.
Correct.
And that also shows the driveway at a length of, of, I believe I noticed it was 44 feet.
Uh, forty, uh, forty, well, it has to be a minimum of forty-three, forty-three feet.
Right. I, I think it was 44 in what I saw this, this afternoon, but it is.
Yeah, I think one side, when you square it off. You know, to, to meet the, the requirement of 43 because the driveway is at a slight angle that calculates on the other side to, to 44 feet.
Okay, thank you. So just, just to be clear, for those of us who had, have may have forgotten. The, the reason why the length of the driveway is, is important is because. Uh, if you, if it is too short, you're putting, you're putting the parking space in the required minimum front yard. And by extending the driveway, you're putting the parking space beyond the, it's, it's still in our front yard. But it's not in the required minimum front yard anymore. So we've avoided creating. A new non-conformity by extending the length of the driveway from what it really, from what it originally was. To 43 feet and now 44, but that. That's what that abstract, extruse discussion was about. Um. The, I wonder. The issue that had, has, was raised, uh, was what was the safety of this intersection? Uh, we have accident data as was required. There have been. I believe it's nine accidents in the last four years or something like that, uh, at this location. Um, generally, I think that those things were, I mean, obviously they were not caused by interference. Coming out of the driveway that we're talking about tonight. Uh, but Mr. Moore's observation that this is a dangerous intersection is correct. It's. It is usual for intersections in Arlington to have that many accidents. Um. The view of the. The view of Mr. Alessi, the transportation planner. Uh, was that this is located far enough from the curb. To, uh, not pose, to not pose a damage, a danger because of, of the closeness to the, to the curb. Uh, and in deciding that he thinks it's something like 35 feet away, won't give or take. Uh, because he's looking at where the curb is at some point that's further downstream than the stop sign. Uh, it's, I think about 17 feet away from the stop sign. Uh, and that's the view that, uh, Mr. Copethorn, the town engineer took of it. Uh, usually you avoid parking, uh, within 20 feet of that. Uh, but he thought that, he thought that the, it was, the driveway was all right as it was before. Uh, and that the changes that have been made since then in the more recent plans. Uh, have made it better and he doesn't believe that there's a safety concern either. Uh, all of these things are in the record and they're not in front of my face. And so if I've misconstrued any of them, I invite you to correct me, but. That, that is my recollection of, of where things, uh, where things currently stand. Uh, this is a public hearing. Uh, I read out the rules for effective, uh, communication in, uh, public comment. Uh. And wait, let me just pause here. I've just summarized all of that and I did not ask you to speak. Uh, and that was my mistake. So if there are any members of the board who'd like to address this application before we get into public comment, please do.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bernowski.
May I just ask one question? So, um, I'm looking through the correspondence from the town engineer's office. I just want to make sure I'm clear. That there was this, um, part of the correspondence about whether, um, a drive, a car could park here and then. Enter the street essentially without creating a moving violation by. You know, not being able to stop before the crosswalk. Um. And I, I guess I was a little unclear reading through this. Where, whether this, um. Was it, whether this was a concern for this project, uh, because the engineer seemed to say, assume. Twenty feet, give or take to accomplish this. And, you know. The give or take could be. Many things and also wasn't sure what they're giving or, well, I wasn't sure what they're giving or taking from there. So. I guess I was, I wanted to ask the applicant, from the applicant's perspective. Whether the problem raised by the engineer could, what was a problem that could be afforded.
So, Mr. Cameron?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not sure what your, I, I, my take was, he, he thought that the 17 feet, um, you know, from the. Um, current, um. Stop sign, stop line, I should say, back to where the curb cut starts, um, was adequate. Um, it is, it would accommodate a full-size vehicle. So, I'm. I, I, I'm not, I think he was okay with it. So I'm not sure what your. Question was, so we worked with him, you know, prior to submitting the first plan to make sure that they were, they were okay with it. So. Um. And I. I'm not sure I understand that he had a, an issue following his agreement that everything was okay.
I think that, that may go as far as you can do without getting Mr. Copethorn in front of us.
Yeah.
Because he doesn't really, he's not very explicit about that. I think is the case. I think, I'm, I am reading the, the email from, uh, July 24th, 2025. Uh, and what Mr. Copethorn says is, I think the current orientation is better. Barring that it is reducing the distance from the stop line to the driveway to 17 feet. From the recommended 20 feet. And I think that's what, Mr. Berdowski, I think that is what you're referring to. I mean, there is a different one where he talks specifically about why. Uh. Here he says that, again, it was, the 20 feet is only a recommendation and not a requirement. And previously he had indicated that he didn't object to the, to the proposal. Uh, but he obviously still contained, still expressed some concern over the fact that. Uh, the 20 feet would have been better. So if I'm reading, I think I'm reading that right, but, but I think everyone sort of is. You need to sort of get on notice there to, to check me on that. Does that help, Brad, or?
I, I think, I think so. I just was trying to, I just was trying to make sure that a lingering concern of his. That may have been valid, didn't get just kind of dropped over time, not on any. Not casting aspersions on his end, but just because that's the way email communication. Tends to work out. So I just wanted to make sure there was no lingering things that we need to pick up there. I'm satisfied. Thank you.
All right. Is there anything else before we always start public comment? All right. Uh, seeing none, uh, I've sort of read out the general guidelines for public comment before. Uh, and so let me open the public comment period. Anyone who wishes to address this application, please either hit star nine if you're not on Zoom. Or you hit the reactives tab if you are. Okay, I'm seeing none. Oops, nope, there is some. Mr. Moore, you were slow on the trigger this time.
I was, Mr. Chair, I apologize. I'm often slow as I'm getting older. Um, uh, Steve Moore, Piedmont Street, um. I, I appreciate the boards reaching out to the various town staff to, to get this information because I think it was, it's an important part of the discussion. Um. And I, I'm not surprised to see the accident list. Um. And I'm not surprised to see the, um. The input by the various officials about how. Um, this isn't great, but it probably is legal. That's sort of how I interpret the, the various, uh, inputs there. Um. And I guess I would, I would respond that. There's a reason they came up with 20 feet from the stop sign. I don't know what it is. I'm not a transportation expert. And it's not 17, it's 20. And. There's some reason for that. And, and although the, the, um, the transportation engineer or is it Mr. Koppa Thorne said that. You know, it's not a requirement, it's a recommendation, but it's recommended for a reason. And, um, and this does sort of break that. Um. I, I understand, yes, there's many intersections in Arlington like this sadly. And they are variously dangerous or, or less so. Um. And that doesn't, that doesn't make it a good idea. It just makes it a fact, this particular intersection is a dangerous one. In that it's got. This reverse turn. I don't know if any of the board had a chance to go over and see what I'm talking about if you're coming down Wallaston and. Entering it from. Uh, you know, the, the side of it away from Route Two. Um, uh, but it just, you cannot see people coming around the corner. Now, that being said, this is a, you know, it's a request for a driveway. It's just for a curb cut. It's not. A request to like fix the intersection. I, I understand that. This, um. This area is used as a cut through. It's how people exit Route Two and get into this part of town. They use all the various streets to get to this intersection and then have to make some choices about the way they want to go. The side from Route Two is not the problem. However, the side from Wallaston is, and the fact all that traffic's coming from Route Two and also getting. I guess from time to time to Route Two makes this a busy place. Um, and I don't know why. The town hasn't worked harder at trying to slow the traffic on Appleton down as it approaches this reverse, reverse turn. Which is why the accidents occur. Uh, I guess I would, I would further ask sort of rhetorically. This list of nine accidents, I'm wondering what the severity of those accidents were. Were they just simple fender benders or were they? Uh. Almost resulting in loss of life. I know of one that was quite bad. The person didn't die, but they were. Badly injured. The car was totaled. I don't know about the other eight. I just know that this, this particular intersection has the potential. For that sort of accident and what we're talking about is complicating this intersection. So that, that's my. That I, I sort of said my piece. The board, board will do what it, what it needs to do and. With the recognition that this situation is, is relatively common in town. This particular intersection is a bad one. And I, I certainly will. Um, with, will go with the, um, the judgment of the board. I, I do want to apologize to Ms. Corbett. I, I. Last, at the last meeting, I had, uh, said, uh, repeatedly about it's a matter of convenience. That was very inartful on my part because, uh, depending on your needs, it's not a convenience. It's a requirement to have. Uh, help, you know. Helpers and caregivers and that sort of thing. And I didn't mean to be dismissive of her situation at all. Um, I understand why she is requesting this. I, it's, it's a sensible. Reason for request. It's just that this is a bad place to be requesting it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mistai?
Hi, this is Caterina Sai. I'm a resident at 356 Appleton Street. I'm a neighbor of Ms. Corbett. And I've lived on this street for 13 years. And so I really also appreciate. Um, Mr. Moore's comment that, you know, traffic coming down Appleton Street should slow down. Uh, that would avoid, I think, the majority, if not all, of this accident. And so, but this is a, a petition to request for a second driveway, which Miss Corporate sorely needs. Um, she is getting elderly and she. I think by directing the traffic actually from Wallaston, it would actually reduce the probability of. Accidents at this intersection as I've lived across. The way and seen many traffic accidents happen. Um. Unfortunate that the Wallaston is trying to get in while people are reaching down Appleton. And so, um, you know, I don't think that addition of that driveway, if anything, is going to increase the probability of accidents on that street.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Sai. So anyone else who would like to address the application?
Uh, yes, hello, this is, this is Roland Grangelo. I'm not sure.
Mr. Granning?
Yes, I'm, I'm on the phone. My apologies. I, I can't really, uh, see who's up.
Could you provide your name and address for the record?
Uh, yes, 356 Appleton Street. I live on the same, uh, property as, as Ms. Sai. And I just want to second what she said, that I, I live right there. Uh, I see how some of these accidents, how, how they have happened. I drive there myself. Um, I think the biggest issue is traffic coming down from 356, sorry, from coming down on Appleton Street. Uh, as long as people drive there and obeying the, the speed limits. Uh, they can easily see who's coming out of Wallaston Ave. Uh, I drive there myself. Um, and I agree, I do not see how having. A, an additional sort of parking space on Wallaston is gonna do, change, do anything to change the traffic situation there. It's certainly not going to increase the risk of any accidents. Um, so again, I, I just want to state my support for, uh, having this additional driveway for Ms. Corbett. And, and state my, state my, um, you know, my opinion that. This is not going to do anything to increase the risk of any accidents at that intersection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granning Law. Is there anyone else who would like to address this application from the public? Okay, seeing none, the public comment period is closed. Um, and we can turn to discussing the application. Just. Um. I want, I did want to say that, that, uh. Or remind the board that Mr. Alessi's conclusion was a little bit. Was a little bit different from Mr. Copethorn's in that. Uh. Mr. Alessi, uh, basically said that. The, the general rule, uh, as far as traffic engineers are concerned, is that you should be 20 feet away from the intersection. The stop sign in, in his view at least, is not the intersection. It's located itself about 20 feet away from where the actual intersection is. Um, and so, uh, his conclusion is that the proposed driveway would be 37 feet from the intersection. Uh, well above the minimum of, of 20. And his final conclusion is based on the aforementioned findings, I do not think that the proposed driveway is too close to the intersection. Um, so that's not quite. Quite the same as being a guarded approval of. And, uh, Mr. Copethorn is not quite as enthusiastic as, as that sort of seems to be, but. Um. But he is pretty definite in support of the notion and that some of the others, the people of the public comment have expressed that. Whatever the difficulty of safety is, it's not the driveway that is going to contribute to them. Um. So with that, uh. The application before us is, uh, relatively simple one. Uh, under the, the, uh, section, uh, six. Uh, point, 1.10 of the zoning bylaw, we can authorize by special permit a second driveway if it meets three criteria. The first criterion is whether it, uh, whether a second driveway would contribute to. An undue concentration of population and it's hard to see how, uh, that would be relevant in this case. The second is whether it's consistent with the adequate provision of transportation and that's the issue we've been talking about and that we have to decide about. And the third is whether it reconserves the value of property and land. Uh, in the vicinity of, of, of the site. And there I think that, again, there's no issue that has been raised, uh, that raises a difficulty there. If you pass those specific criteria, then of course you have to pass the question of, uh. Uh. The, the, make, to make the findings under section 3.3.3. Uh, a number of them, like the effect on the, on, on the, uh. Municipal systems and water and. A number of them, like the effect on the, on, on the municipal systems and water and so forth are irrelevant and we don't really need to discuss it here. One of them is that it's, would not create undue congestion. And I don't know that this would create undue congestion, but there's a question potentially about pedestrian safety that we'd have to consider that is kind of bound up in general with the question of the safety of the intersection and the effect of it here as well. The, obviously the benefit of all of this is that, as Mr. Moore in public comment pointed out is that the applicant has got a serious need for being able to have the parking to accommodate the people who are helping her get through. And her neighbors have generally come to her, to her defense on, on that point as well. And that would be the plus. And the minus are the transportation concerns that, that have been raised and that were discussed both by the county staff and by Mr. Moore and by the neighbors. So I think it's fair to say that this application is probably, depends upon what your attitude is towards the transportation situation. And that it would be easy if we find that this is not going to contribute to the danger of this intersection, that to find that it qualifies for a special permit and difficult to reach that conclusion if our conclusion on the transportation is different. So with that outline, which I hope is helpful, I wonder if the members of the board have comments or questions that they'd like to pursue on that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bernowski.
I just wanted to clarify why I was asking about the difference between the 17 and the 20 earlier. Because my, just my understanding was that it's just so in terms of the actual factors on, basically the safety of the, safety of the, of transportation would impact both the, well, both findings, right? Just the actual findings we have to make as a threshold manager. And then the findings are 333. I think, you know, looking up, when I looked up the size of a standard full-size car, they can range between 16 to 18 feet. And just looking at the, looking at the drawings, it doesn't seem, at least on my reading, that there would really be many occasions I could imagine where the car would back, a car of that size would back over the stop line. Because if you're going towards Appleton, you're going to be backing away from the stop line. So there's not really any issue there. And if you're going away from Appleton, you have a wider, you know, birth, wider curve to basically deal with. I, I'm not terribly concerned about, about that for that reason, especially since it didn't seem to be something that in the correspondence basically percolated up to the top for very long. I would also add that, so that's the reason I'm not that concerned. The other thing I would say in terms of the actual congestion on the streets, I do think it's, to me at least, compelling the point that Appleton is the problem street. And if we take cars off of Appleton, it's actually helping the situation, not hindering it. So I'm inclined to think that this actually passes muster, but that's just my view.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address this? But just for the record, I, I agree with what Mr. Bernowski said. I, I think there's a huge problem here in terms of safety. And that this driveway is not very relevant to that problem. And the town may have, and does have lots of work that it needs to do to address this. And all some other dangerous intersections, especially in Arlington Heights. And it's maybe disappointing that, that we're having these rate of accidents in 2025 when it was already obviously having a lot of accidents back in 2021. But I don't really think that that's a reason for denying the application here. I think that, that this driveway can be put in without unnecessarily endangering people, without even necessarily endangering people. And I'm sort of inclined to agree with town staff to say that, that this is something that can be done in a, in a safe, in a safe manner. I will say that I think that the concern that Mr. Bernowski has exactly right, the concern that Mr. Copethorn originally had was that you're not allowed to actually do move beyond the stop, the line for the stop sign. And so if you found yourself at the stop sign and somebody wanted to pull out on this driveway, you might be tempted to move forward to accommodate that. But you wouldn't necessarily have, have to do that. And the alternative would be to just let the person who's trying to get out of the parking space wait until you can get out past the stop sign. So I don't, I think that that's probably not going to be a big problem and that it may interfere somewhat with the operation of the driveway, but it doesn't really raise, in my mind, a safety concern. And I think that that potential disadvantage is outweighed by, by the benefit of being able to provide needed assistance to Mrs. Corbett. Is there any other discussion? Can I ask if, if there's anyone who believes that they, the board shouldn't, cannot make the findings that are necessary either under 6110A or section 3.3.3? Okay, well, hearing none. As you all know, our procedure at this point is to close the public hearing unless there's somebody who thinks that we would benefit for leaving it open because we need additional information. We will prepare an, a formal opinion and that will be the one in which we, which we vote and will be the final action on, on the application. And that will probably come before us on April, excuse me, on August 26th. Seeing that, the chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Mr. Bernowski moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. LeBlanc. Is there any discussion? Saying none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Holy?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Bernowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We have closed the public hearing. We'll prepare that opinion and hopefully it will be available to be acted upon formally on, on, at our next meeting on the 26th. All right, that, that concludes our agenda. Before we adjourn, is there anything else that anyone would like to, to say? We, we do, of course, now have, we, we, at one point thought we would have a vacation on the 26th. And I think it's fair to say that we are not. We have only ourselves to blame for that possibly, but nevertheless, we will all get together and deal with that. I don't, I think that Ms. Ralston, I'm right in saying that the cases that we put onto the agenda on the 26th today are the only ones there or is there something else?
Nope, just those three.
And the, do we have anything yet for September 9th?
We have one variance request.
Those are usually easy. Okay, so we don't have many cases going out, but, but there's still a little bit more. So thank you all for, for coming tonight. And for those of you who are from the public and still there, thank you for your patience. And we very much welcome your participation in our process. And the chair will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So move by Mr. Dupont. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by, I think, Mr. LeBlanc. And we'll have the roll call, Mr. Dupont.
Yes.
Mr. Holy?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Bernowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, we are adjourned. Thanks for everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.